Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Thursday, January 3rd, 2019. My name is Chris Dodson. With us today is Nick Miller, our sign language interpreter. City Council will discuss the following legislation for preliminary vote. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the chair. New Papers. Bill Number 2018-1210. Resolution Authorizing to Channel 210 Acceptance of Gifts to City of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pirates Charity of $12,500 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 2018-1246. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 862 of 2018 Effective 1/1/2009, entitled Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City of Pittsburgh for the 2019 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation thereof, and Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions by Deleting the Position of Administrative Aid in the Department of Public Safety Administration and Adding Position Title "Stop the Violence Coordinator" on Pages 238 and 239 of the 2019 Operating Budget. Sponsors are Reverend Burgess and Mr. Lavelle. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. Lavelle Chair. New Papers. Bill Number 2018-1218. The Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6. Conduct Article 1. Regulated Actions and Rights by Repealing the Existing Language of Chapter 607, Firearms, Ammunition, and Other Weapons in its entirety, and Replacing it with a new Chapter 607, General Firearms Conduct, to update existing laws to meet the public safety needs of residents. Sponsored by Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, and Ms. Gross. Bill Number 2018-1219. An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6. Conduct Article 1. Regulated Actions and Rights by Adding Chapter 610. Ban on Specified Firearms Accessories, Ammunition, and Modifications to Place Prohibition on Certain Firearms, Accessories, Ammunition, and Modification. Sponsors, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, and Ms. Gross. Bill Number 2018-1220. An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6. Conduct Article 1. Regulated Actions and Rights by Adding Chapter 603. Extreme Risk Protection Orders to Provide for Appropriate Injunctive Actions for the Preservation of Public Safety in Extreme Circumstances. Bill Number 2018-1232. Resolution Amending Resolution 712 of 2016, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc., to provide body worn cameras for the Bureau of Police as well as additional related goods and services by increasing the cost from $1,528,209 to $2,326,509.0 over the course of the contract. Public Works Committee, Ms. Kell Smith is the chair. New Papers. Resolution Providing for Contract or Contracts or the Use of Existing Contracts and Agreements or Agreements or the Use of Existing Agreements Providing for the Design and Replacement of the Charles Anderson Bridge and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof not to exceed $965,794.3. Bill Number 2018-1238. Resolution Accepting Dedication of a Portion of a Street A Wiley Avenue and Street B North and Street B South, Together Logan Street, Street C North Street, C South, Together Fullerton Street, which are part of the Lower Hill Redevelopment District Roadway Plan as laid out in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure Project Number 14103 Plans in the 3rd Ward 6th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 2018-1239. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a License and Operating Agreement or Agreements with HFT Management, Inc., DBA Gateway Outdoor Advertising for Services Related to Installation, Operation, Maintenance, and Advertising of Transit Shelters and Associated Street Furniture. Bill Number 2018-1245. Resolution Amending Resolution 755 of 2018, entitled Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for Services rendered by Clean Team employees within the South Side PED so as to increase the contract amount not to exceed $88,981. And extend the agreement to April 30th, 2019. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the chair. New Papers. Bill Number 2018-1212. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Abrams House located at 118-A Wootland Road, Block and Lot Number 85-R-211 in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Also, Bill Number 2018-1213. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain sites known as the Westinghouse Memorial located in Shinley Park, Block and Lot Numbers 27-S-150-0000-01 in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Enter Governmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the chair. Deferred Papers. Bill Number 2018-0983. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a Quick Claim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and Designated City-Owned Properties to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, the consideration of $1 each contingent upon the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance first entering into a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties. New Papers. Bill Number 2018-1214. Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 56-B Lots 247, 248, 252, and 254. Council District Number 5 Site Assemblage for Future Redevelopment, -133, 135, 143, and 145 Hazelwood Avenue. Bill Number 2018-1215. Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned property in the 19th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 4-L Lot 133, Council District Number 2 and 6, Boggs Avenue Future Development. Bill Number 2018-1216. Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all city rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 18th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 15R Lot 231 and 268. Block 15S Lots 14, 26, 170, 175, 189, 192, 196, 197, 198, and 199. And Block 34D Lot 14, Council District Number 3, 847 Gearing Avenue, 704 Delmont Avenue, 235 and 315 Michigan Street, 809, 811, 817, 827, 835, 903, 911, and 919 Eldora Place. Bill Number 2018-1233. Resolution Adopting Plan Revisions to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for West Pittsburgh Business Park Buildings, Number 1A, Number 1B, Number 2 at 563 Napier Boulevard, Pittsburgh, PA 15205. Bill Number 2018-1234. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to renew the Non-Exclusive License Agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus at 7180 Highland Drive, Pittsburgh, PA 15206, for limited use to conduct due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management purposes. Bill Number 2018-1235. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Professional Service Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and A&amp;E Seven Pittsburgh, LLC, for Architecture and Engineering Design Services for the multi-story office building out at 412 Formerly 420 Boulevard of the Allies, Pittsburgh, PA 15219, for the not to exceed the amount of $596,576.50. Amounts broken out below per use area. If during the design process amounts need to be adjusted, another resolution will be issued to reconcile the changes. Bill Number 2018-1236. Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 124N Lots 110, 114, 115, and 116. Council District Number 9 Site Assemblage for Future Long-Term Urban Agricultural Use, 336 Lormer Avenue. And Bill Number 2018-1237. Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, titles, and interests, if any, into the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block 124N Lots 125, 126, 127, 128, and 129. Council District 9 Greenspace, 307, 309, 311, 313, and 315 Lormer Avenue. Now, that concludes the reading for January, I mean, for Thursday, January 3rd, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. And welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of Thursday, January 3rd at 1:30 PM. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address council, please come forth. You'll be given three minutes. Start off with your name and either address or location. And the green light means your time has begun. Yellow light means you have a minute to summarize. Red light means your time has expired. Please relinquish the podium. First speaker, please.
Happy New Year.
First speaker, please. Seeing no other speakers, we will go to the roll call. We ask that please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill, Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris. President Cross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. We're going to go out of order. We're going to go to, on page 2, Public Safety Service Committee. Mr. Lavelle is the chair. Even in that committee, we're going to go out of order and we're going to take the, this is the last, yes, it's the last bill of this committee first. Bill Number 2018-1232.
Bill 1232. Resolution Amending Resolution 712. To provide body worn cameras for the Bureau of Police as well as additional related goods and services by increasing the cost from $1,528,209 to $2,326,509 over the course of the contract.
I need a motion, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to approve.
Do the second, Mr. Lavelle.
This is just an extension of an already existing contract that will allow the police to finish outfitting the rest of the bureau with the body worn cameras. I believe there are purchasing about 400.
He's sorry, in attendance? Any other conversation? If there's no other conversation, I do want to publicly, in particular, thank the chief and his staff for working with Mr. Lavelle and I on the Stop Violence Initiative and on working on violence prevention programs, which we know are important to have stop violence in our community. We need both preventive programs and we need engagement programs. We need a variety of programming. And so I just want to thank you for your willingness, your partnership, and your participation. But those comments, all in favor? Huh? Best chief ever. Chief, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Positive recommendation. Now, we'll go, we'll stay in this committee. I believe all three, the next three bills, the first three bills need to be held. If you could read them together, please.
Bill 1218. An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6. Regulated Actions and Rights by Repelling the Existing Language of Chapter 607, Firearms, Ammunition, and Other Weapons in its entirety and Replacing it with a new Chapter 607, General Firearms Conduct, to update existing laws to meet the public safety needs of residents. Bill Number 1219. An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6. Regulated Actions and Rights by Adding Chapter 610. Ban on Specified Firearms Accessories, Ammunition, and Modifications to Place a Prohibition on Certain Firearms Accessories, Ammunition, and Modifications. Bill Number 1220. An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6. Regulated Actions and Rights by Adding Chapter 603. Extreme Risk Protection Orders to Provide for an Appropriate Injunctive Actions for the Preservation of the Public Safety in Extreme Circumstances.
I need a motion to hold for a public hearing, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to hold for a cable cast public hearing?
Do the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Those bills are held for public hearing. That takes us to, that takes us to the beginning, page 1 of our agenda. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1209. Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a warrant in favor of Kramer Mains and Associate and Rory Cox in an amount not to exceed $19,000 in full and final settlement of an action filed in the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and crossfired with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission.
The executive session was held earlier today and need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Conversation. No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. All right, next bill, please.
Bill 1210. Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pirates Charity of $12,500 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund.
Need a motion, Mr. Anyone.
All right, motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Conversation, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, what, Public Safety Support Trust Fund?
For me?
What Public Safety Support Trust Fund? In other words, I'm trying to make sure that this isn't the fund that, there's a trust fund for, when they're not working for the city, they're working out, you know?
Not that trust fund.
Okay.
I don't know which one it is, but it's not, that's a different, I know that's a,
can you find that? How many trust funds that we do?
We began to talk to, I think Councilwoman Gross and I began having this conversation two, three weeks ago, where I told her that there were funds that Public Safety has some control over. They have a number of trust funds, some from Caesar's. They have a number of trust funds that they, that they administrate. Some that we are over, some I think we're not over. I do not know. If you want me to, I can hold this open and call over or?
No, I just want to find out.
All right, we'll find out by Tuesday. The clerk will find out by Tuesday.
I want to make sure they're not spending the money that the officers are also putting in.
Yeah, she wants to make sure this is not for overtime. This is not the overtime trust fund, which it's not, but let's make sure.
Because none of that should be.
But I want to know specifically what it's going to.
Yeah, we'll know what specifically it's going to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. All right, next bill, please.
Bill 1246. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 862 by Deleting the Position of Administrative Aid in the Department of Public Safety Administration and Adding Position Title "Stop the Violence Coordinator" on Pages 238 and 239 of the 2019 Operating Budget.
All right, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I will explain it briefly. This is a budget neutral move with Public Safety. They want to change titles to help us to both coordinate some of the violence prevention programs, the one we are going to vote on in the next few weeks or a few months after we have a post agenda. So it's actually working with Public Safety. They asked for this change. And it's basically taking a vacant title, changing titles. It's basically changing titles.
So is the person a civilian?
The person will be a civilian, yes. Person will be a civilian. Would, yes, the person will be a civilian. They have a position already there. We simply changed the name of a position they already had and added it.
Is it going to increase in pay or anything?
The, the, there is, I think we are, what is we doing? From the vacancy allowance, a vacant position titled Administrative Aid has been deleted from the budget and the vacancy allowance has been increased to accommodate the position as a neutral revenue, as revenue neutral for the 2019 budget. And Mr. Bennet, I think he's in the house, has helped me do this. I think it's an increase in pay for the administrative assistant.
For the current person that's getting a change in title.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Any conversation? No other conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Invoices, none. Interdepartmental transfers, none. P cards on the table, need a motion for the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Question on the P cards. No questions on the P cards. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Takes us, I believe.
I'm abstaining because I didn't get to go through them.
Abstain has went through. I believe this takes us to page 3, which is the Public Works Committee. Ms. Kell Smith, the honorable, is the chair of that committee. We have new papers.
Bill 1217. Resolution Providing for a Contract and/or Agreement Providing for the Design and Replacement of the Charles Anderson Bridge and Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof not to exceed $965,794.3.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Need a second.
Second.
Question, conversation, Ms. Smith.
Whose district is this?
Uh, Bruce, Council President and I split it. But I do all the work in it.
So I'll defer to one of you. That's that.
Okay, Councilman. I have no question. I mean, as a lot of you know, this is the bridge. As you're going, driving through Shinley Park on your way to Oakland on the Boulevard of the Allies, you pass the Shinley Park Swimming Pool on your left. You go over, that's the Charles Anderson Bridge. And this is due for repair. Is it, I'll just ask, is it rehab or demo, or we don't know yet? We don't know yet, yeah. In the next couple of years, this is either going to be a full blown demo and rebuild or it's going to be a rehab.
Conversation.
Yeah, so we're putting money in and we don't know what we're doing?
Well, I believe this is, this is an acceptance to go down that process through PNDOT and everything like that.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Takes us to next bill, please.
Bill 1238. Resolution Accepting Dedication of a Portion of Street A and Street B North and Street B South, Street C North and Street C South, which are part of the Lower Hill Redevelopment District Roadway Plan as laid out in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure Project Number 14103 Plans in the 3rd Ward 6th Council District of the City.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith. Do the second.
Second.
Sixth district.
Yeah, these are the Lower Hill District streets that are being cut in.
Good. Ms. Harris.
Yeah, no one's going to get, you know how they were saying we had to change names in certain areas because the streets sounded alike? So, because we have North Avenue, North Street. Nobody's going to be confused by that, do we know?
Well, we have a street naming committee that works on those things, but she's retired.
I'm just wondering, yeah, has anybody looked at it?
I have not, but you can look at it between now and Tuesday for a final vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1239. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to Enter into a License and Operating Agreement with HFT Management for Services Related to Installation, Operation, Maintenance, and Advertising of Transit Shelters and Associated Street Furniture.
All right, need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to hold one week.
Is there a second?
Okay, second.
Second, any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. New bill, please.
Bill 1245. Resolution Amending Resolution 755. So as to increase the contract amount not to exceed $88,981 and extend the agreement to April 30th, 2019.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
And I'll defer to Council.
President Cross.
Yep, thank you very much. So now that we've completed the pilot project of the Clean Team on the East Carson Street Quarter, we've met with the Office of Management and Budget and we have learned that we will be required to put it out for bid. And so what we want to do here is extend the contract through the end of April so that we can keep services up and running while we put it out for bid. And that's the reason for this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppusers, nay. New Committee, Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill 1003. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title 9, Zone in Article 1, Plan Development District in Article 4.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Read the next two bills together, please.
Bill 1212, Resolution Providing for a Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure Known as the Abram House Located in the Fourteenth Ward. Bill Number 1213, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Site Known as the Westing House Memorial Located in Shenley Park in the Fourteenth Ward.
Both of these coming back from the Historic Review Commission, or they're, they're already coming back to us from the?
It's been recommended.
Okay, if that case, then we need to hold for public hearing.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. That exhausts that committee. We're now at the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. Uh, we have deferred paper.
Bill 983, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute a Quick Claim deed and any other necessary or appropriate document, agreement, and instrument conveying as is all of the city's right, title, and interests, if any, and designated city-owned properties to the URA for consideration of $1 each contingent upon the mayor and director of the Department of Finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances and further setting forth the rights and obligation of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties.
Uh, why don't you, why don't you just keep going? Why don't you read the next, one, two, three, four, the next three?
We're, actually, we're going to hold this first one for six weeks.
Oh, you're going to hold that one, okay.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Then read the next three for them.
Bill 1214, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, into the Publicly Owned Property in the Fifteenth Ward Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County. Bill Number 1215, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, into the Publicly Owned Property in the Nineteenth Ward of the City Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County. Bill Number 1216, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, into the Publicly Owned Properties in the Eighteenth Ward of the City, the Del, uh, Designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County.
Thank you very much. Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to appro, it's my committee, right? Motion to approve.
Uh, second, uh, I appreciate very brief discussion.
Uh, Mr. O'Connor, who's not Ms. Gross.
Yeah, um, so I can tell you 1214 is my district. It's around the Hazelwood, uh, Old Library. Uh, I'm supportive of that. Um, the other two, that's, um, I can bring the URA up if they would like to discuss.
I can say 1215 is, uh, Boggs Avenue, Sixth Boggs Avenue, which City Council held because there was questions a bit whether it was going to be sold, uh, to a CDC who was going to sell it to a board member for development. We held it and they put it out for bid and then, um, it increased the amount from thousands of dollars to a couple thousand dollars to, um, forty-some thousand dollars. And then, uh, we talked to the URA about purchasing the building, holding on to it, and then putting it through a proper public process and they have done so. That's what this is and we're thrilled with it, so, and so in that regard, we're thrilled.
All right, any other, see?
Uh, I do.
Do you, Council President is asking for 1216. Is that correct?
It's somewhere from your right here, great.
Please come forward. Our good friends and colleagues from the URA will come and explain this to us. They start off by telling us your name and position and then explain this, the, uh, we are on Bill 21216, the other two bills we understand.
Sure, absolutely. Hi, everybody, Julie Edwards, Real Estate Officer.
Constance Mayer, Real Estate Transaction Specialist.
So Bill 1216 is, um, Acquisition of Publicly Owned Properties in Belzhuver. Um, we would ult, we're ultimately looking to convey those to our Pittsburgh Housing and Development Corporation for Rehab, Affordable Resale. We're working with the Belzhuver Consensus Group and Hilltop, and Hilltop Rising.
All right, that's good. That's all I wanted to hear. I want to make certain that the process was open and public and that the consensus group was indeed in, involved and aware. Okay, great, thank you very much. If I can be of help, though, um, I, I'd, I'd really like to participate.
Absolutely.
In, in, uh, in, in helping you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Motion approval on the table, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. All right, next bill, please.
Bill 1233, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Wets Pittsburgh Business Park Buildings Number 1A, 1B, Number 2 at 563 Napier Boulevard.
I should have went to the other URA bills.
Uh, motion to approve?
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. And that was my fault, Mr. O'Connor, by identifying the wrong chair of the committee. Why don't you, let's go to the URA because they're here rather than have them do musical chairs.
You want to do the last two?
Well, I'm, I'm already, it doesn't matter, they're very set down, so let's go to the next bill. We might as well walk through it. 1234?
Bill 1234, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to renew, to renew the non-exclusive license agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veteran Affairs Highland Drive Campus for limited use and to conduct due diligence pursuant to the application approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to acquire the property for law enforcement and emergency management purposes.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Any conversation? Miss, conversation first with Ms. Gross, then Ms. Harris.
So, uh, I'm not sure if anyone can help me with this, if.
They are here, yeah. If you, if you guys don't mind, this is, these are the properties we're buying, just so everybody knows, for our emergency facilities management that they're trying.
On the camp, same campus.
Yeah.
Hey, Peter.
Thank you, gentlemen. Will you just state your names and positions for us for the record?
Peter McDevitt, uh, Senior Asset Management Analyst in the Office of Management and Budget.
Chris Hornstein, Assistant Director, Facilities and Public Works.
Thank you so much. So for my own, um, edification here, the last time we were briefed on it or that we had this conversation at the table, I thought we had an exclusive license agreement. Like, is there, are there going to be other developers trying to bid on this while we're doing our due diligence? So what, why does it say non-exclusive license agreement?
Because the VA still owns it, so they need access to it. So it's the city.
Oh, I see, so it's just about, all right, so it's not like meaning that it's an open bidding war?
No, at this point, it's just, it's the city or bust for them, so.
Very good, okay. So just for the record, that when, when the title of our bill says non-exclusive license agreement, it just means that we can't tell them they're trespassing and they can't tell us we're trespassing.
Exactly, yeah.
We both have, both parties have access to the site.
We have a set of keys, they have a set of keys.
That's really helpful, thank you. That's an easy answer, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harris.
Yes, I, I'd actually like to see that agreement, say, I think there's some things that, some rooms that might be off distance to, uh, the veterans if we put special teams up there.
Yeah, so we, through the agreement, um, it allows us to use the, the campus if we have limited training needs. Um, there's some limited access to the site. There's, there's one portion where, uh, the VA only has access to it and it's just due to the condition of the buildings that are on that portion.
Okay.
Um, and then there's not, there's limited power and, and water going to all of the buildings, so there's only so much we can do with it. But it does allow us to have access for limited training, um, and our due diligence that we might need to do on the site.
Now, I know we're doing everything on the grounds we're, we're having.
Yeah, it's very limited, um, if there's a snowfall, we will have to plow that, but uh, even.
Also the grass cutting and.
Yeah, we haven't had to do that yet, um, lucky for us, uh.
No, but we put it in a budget for that.
Yes, um, and, uh, DPW is aware of it and we've, in talking with the VA, they're aware that this is not our number one priority to maintain those grounds and, and they're okay with it. It wasn't their first priority either as it's an unused site.
And, and maybe I need to talk to you offline or, or the Public Safety Director because, okay, we're, we're using Western Avenue, uh, we picked up and we remodeled all that. We also picked up CCAC and remodeled all that. We're picking up Stevens School and we're going to be remodeling that, uh, for the grounds. I, I think it's four hundred and some thousand dollars a year to keep the grounds.
For the VA?
Yeah, for Clean City, from Clean Cities. We don't call them Clean Cities anymore, uh.
I don't think we have any, there's, yeah, there's nobody on.
City Source?
No, we don't, City Source isn't, um, going to maintain the VA campus.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Um, and I was just wondering.
Yes, it'll be.
Yeah.
Public Works Parks.
Will the remodeling or whatever is done in there be done by our people or will there be more money?
It, the VA campus is going to be a heavy lift once, um, we do take it on ownership. We will get the entire site for free, uh, but all of the work that needs to be done on the site will then be on us and we need to demolish buildings and rebuild buildings and renovate buildings and it's going to be a, a very large, heavy task.
Okay, so they're going to own the property, but we're sort of owning the buildings?
No, we'll own the property too.
Okay.
Once the, once, so this is just a license agreement that allows us access for now.
Okay.
As we go through the public benefit conveyance process, so.
My understanding was that, that, that Veterans Affairs was going to keep the property and we were using the property.
As of this agreement, that's.
Just as.
Yeah, just, just heard the legislation.
So we're planning on taking it over totally?
Yes.
Totally. And the veterans are on board with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, they've moved out of the site five or six years ago at this point, so.
Yeah, I know, it's just been sitting there.
Yeah, so.
Okey dokey, thank you.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
Mr. Chair, can I register aye votes on, uh, 235, 236, and 237, please?
Thank you dearly noted.
Thank you very much.
Next bill, please.
Thank you.
Bill 1235, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with AE7 Pittsburgh for Architectural and Engineering Design Services for the multi-story office build out at 412 Boulevard of the Allies for the not to exceed amount of $596,576.03.
Change the address.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, conversation. Ms. Harris.
Yeah, AE7, who's district?
Uh, this is the building downtown.
Downtown building.
Okay, which one?
Come on to the table, yeah, come on back.
Which one?
Boulevard of the.
New building.
Oh, okay.
Boulevard Alaba building.
Okay, that's a no, okay.
Any other conversation? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's do roll call vote, please.
And, and I would like to speak to.
Well, you, before we take the vote, Ms. Harris has the floor. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I just want to say that with all the remodeling we've done with 200 Ross Street, um, and being in that building and the floods they talked about, which were puddle, uh, of a, of a line dripping through and to spend this plus, uh, taking a bond out for another building, I, I see a lot of other things that we could be doing in the communities of the city, so.
You'd like to purchase five buildings and share them?
All right, any other conversation?
Yeah, or North Side, or anywhere else.
Uh, Ms. Strasburger.
Uh, can you just tell me a little bit more about this company, how the, um, how it was chosen and why?
Absolutely. AE7 is a, uh, national, um, architectural engineering firm. Um, they were selected through, uh, public bidding process for professional services. And they were selected as being the best qualified candidate at the most reasonable cost, um, to provide design services for 412 Boulevard of the Allies.
Uh, I saw Ms. Smith first, then Mr. LaBelle.
So, um, when you sent out the RFP for the architectural firm, did you put any preference for the city of Pittsburgh or for Allegheny County at least, or is it just, you just do a national search and it doesn't matter that we have talent here in the city of Pittsburgh?
No, we posted that on the city's, um, Beacon website through our normal procurement processes for RFPs.
So, I know, but I want to know, was there anything, what was in the RFP? Did it say anything like additional preference? Because I think that's part of the problem here. We are constantly getting people from national experts. We, we have experts here in the city of Pittsburgh that can do a, a lot of architectural work, a lot of other work that we're getting from outside the city of Pittsburgh limits and, I mean.
This is a firm that has, to answer that question, this is a firm that has an office in Pittsburgh and does work downtown. Um, so they employ people here. They are a national firm, but this is a locally.
But it's a locally national.
It's a locally, uh.
Not headquartered out of Pittsburgh, just has an office in Pittsburgh.
Correct.
Um, next, Mr. LaBelle.
Yes, has this come before EORC for review?
Yes, it is and has been approved by the URC.
Thank you. Other comments, did I see any other hands? Uh, second round, Ms. Strasburger.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, this is a conversation that, um, I think is ongoing, especially within the Women's Caucus, but we have been discussing, and this is not to put you on the spot, but just kind of a general comment that having more information for these types of contracts, especially large ones such as the, as this, um, such as, um, other bidders, um, you know, where this fell cost-wise, um, a little bit more information in, on paper as an attachment to the information we're getting here, whether or not it went through the EORC, all that information, which I think is typical for other boards, authorities, commissions that some of us sit on, um, would be incredibly helpful ahead, so we have that ahead of time as an attachment to the bill itself or, um, as an attachment to the information we're getting at the table, so we can really see, you know, what we're voting on, uh, would be, so I think it's an ongoing conversation we can have, but, um, something that I think a lot of us around the table would hope to improve this year.
Thank you, Councilwoman, I'm glad you brought that up.
Any other conversation? I will make a suggestion that although I'm not in the caucus, I will, you know, I'm, I'll serve you if you ask, I would suggest perhaps that we come up with a generic form that we then circle those. I ring for considerations of any bill, so that any department and or agency that is going to send legislation to council has to fill out the page as an attachment. That way, you get both consistent information, but you'll also get it in a form that you can scan quickly and see the information you want, because the formal, it'll be always consistent, rather than trying to find it. So, um, I'm willing to work with you. If you may not need my help, but to the extent you want my help and the clerk's help, certainly with clerk house to do it, but I'm willing to work with you and have a sense of, of, um, how to do that. Um, other people?
Can I, I just wanna add to that. I just wanna thank Councilman Strasburger for bringing that up, because it is something the Women's Caucus is discussing, and we are working on ways to address it, so that, um, we are getting the information we requested, not just for in this area, but in all the areas with, with every department, because we have said we, for repeatedly, we want more information, we want detail, and we're not, um, receiving that. So, we're gonna make sure that we do receive those things. Uh, we tried to work with people, you know, as kindly as we possibly can, and even through some legislation, well, now we're going to change that. We're gonna make sure the council members have all the information they need to do the jobs that we need to do. But I will say that I think that the Women's Caucus will certainly work with our male counterparts, because we know that you have a lot to offer, um, in this regard, but we also, we're very interested in the public dollars and private doll, or the private dollars coming within, into the city of Pittsburgh. So, I think there's a conversation we should all be having, and we will work with you as the Chair of the Finance Committee as well.
Right, thank you very much. Um, seeing no other conversation, uh, roll call vote.
Mr. Cockhill. Mrs. Gross? Mrs. Harris?
No.
President Kraut registered before he left. Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
No.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Ayes five, noes four.
Thank you very much. If you could read the last two bills together, that's a positive recommendation.
We have a week to switch a vote, that's all I'll say. I'll talk to you later, Anthony.
Uh. Bill twelve thirty-six, resolution authorizing the U R A to acquire all the city's right title and interest if any, entered into publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Council District Number Nine. Bill number twelve thirty-seven, re- resolution authorizing the U R A to acquire all the city's right title and interest if any, entered into the publicly owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Council District Nine.
Need a motion, Mr. Connor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'm fa- I'm in favor of, these are in my council district, I'm in favor of the U R A taking them over. Any other conversation? Ms. Gross?
Would you indulge us by telling us a little bit more about the, the project?
All right, the U R A come for it, and we'll talk to you.
Enthusiastic about urban agriculture, so.
No, I would've never known that.
Spent a few minutes on it. I appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely. All right, so Bill twelve thirty-six, um, this is currently the, um, Larmer Community Garden. The city owns a portion of it, and the U R A owns a portion of it, so we would like to acquire, um, the city portion and then convey to the L C G through our new pilot program called Farmalot. It's a lease-to-own urban agriculture, um, program that we just started up and we're piloting in twenty eighteen. Um, our first pilots are actually in District Nine over, um, in Point Breeze at the Penn State Edible Garden and in Homewood in San Kofa.
Great, so how much total, do you measure it in parcels or acreage or square feet do you have so far for Farmalot?
Uh, we just have those two pilot programs right now, and then we'll evaluate it after.
Do you know how big the pilot pro- programs are, like in, is it teeny tiny, or kinda big?
Um, they're, they're a city lot or two. Yeah, I can, I can look and get you the exact numbers.
Just for a sense of scale. So, yes, we're, you know, this is an encouraging use, it invites the community in, it's good use of public assets and community building and all that kinda stuff, so, thank you.
Um, Ms. Harris?
This, this is all community, right? This, okay. Are you, at any time, and I really want a clear answer on that, maybe we should put it in here, uh, that the neighborhoods do not have to pay ten percent to the U R A?
To pay what? To anything?
On anything on these properties.
Okay, um, I think that, yeah, I think our purchase price was, um, a dollar plus costs, so.
Okay, but at any time on these properties, a community will not have to give you ten percent.
Okay.
Correct? Is that correct, Rev?
Talking about when there's pass-throughs for grant raising, especially if you're doing fundraising, that there's usually a pass-through of ten percent.
Or a piece of property, if we give it to U R A for a dollar, then they charge the neighborhood an additional ten percent.
I don't know the answers to that question. I don't know.
It shouldn't be, not to a community.
I do not, I do not know, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I'll find out and can tell you by final passage. I do not know off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Because I don't think that any community, if we're giving the U R A property in any community organization, and you know what they are in the city of Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Should have to pay an additional ten percent on anything with the properties, because we're donating it to you for, for a dollar. And I'm just, I just wanna make sure, cause there's been quite a few in my district, that there's also, there's always additional ten percent after the city, uh, gives it to the U R A for a dollar.
So, let's not, so, so let me go down the road a little bit. Um, for the last now five months, six months, we, um, the land bank, the U R A, the houser, the, the, um, the, uh, real estate department have been working monthly with monthly meetings, ongoing meetings, to, to talk about the city's land dispensation process. We are all aware that this dispensation process that the city has right now is inconsistent, confusing, and not always serves the city nor the purchaser well. And so, we hope this year to bring to council a new process, or a, a revised process that will get some of these bugs out, right? This is the, I mean, I won't go into it at length, but this, this is only one of the, but one of the bugs, right? We wanna also make sure that people who buy property, you know, um, they're not given the preferred, preferred buyers, that everybody has the same right to purchase the property. There, there's lots of bugs that we have in the system, and I do hear you, and I, I'll simply say that, although I'll look at your particular problem, uh, between now and Tuesday, we are looking at this holistically, trying to figure all this out, so that we would have a, a consistent property dispensation process that not only moves property, but does it in a responsible way. One of the quirks of our system is there is no incentive for some buyers to ever redevelop the property, right? And some of them, they can just sit on it, even without paying taxes, for years and years and years and years and years, it just sits and rots. And so, one of the things we wanna do is be very intentional, so that, and this is, of course, not example of that, but when property is transferred, there is an incentive or, um, a vehicle that kinda lets us know that that property is going to be redeveloped and is ready for redevelopment. So, anyway, we'll talk more about that this year, but I just wanted to say to you, we are aware of these quirks, and we are working collaboratively with the three arms to come up with a process that council will approve, hopefully, and monitor. And I, I, hopefully that's a.
And I just wanna say that it might be different in every portion of the city, because we've had the leadership conference, we've had the development, and, uh, I've been seeing this here and there. So, if it's something you don't want in your district, then fine.
We'll chat.
I just don't want my neighborhoods.
We'll chat more about.
Being charged.
We'll chat more about it in the next, between now and Thursday, and then the next upcoming month. Where, I do have one question. Where is the Penn State one at? Where is it at?
At the Lexington Technology Park.
I forgot, yes, down the street from my house.
Yep.
Very big, but okay. Um, because it's not very big, so that's why I get it.
It's kinda tucked back a little bit.
Yeah, it's not very big. I don't think it's very big. It's not very big. Um, okay. Any other conversation? No conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. I believe that's exhausted the agenda today. Um, again, any final comments? I do have a, I do have one thing, um, is I need a, I need a motion. Um, to, I'm calling for a post-agenda on the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. I've been, I've been asked by community, by the community I represent, to have a post-agenda, and they wanna participate. So, on the equal opportunity, a cable cast post-agenda on the Equal Opportunity Review Commission, I'd like to entertain a motion for that.
Second.
I need a motion.
Motion for a cable cast.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of this post-agenda, I'm calling for, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Now, other things for the good of the council. Uh, let's go this way, starting with Councilman Gross. Let's go around.
Thank you, um, Councilman. I also, um, want to revisit the analysis on, um, and it won't be right away, but on all of our L E R T A programs. It was about a year ago that the city controller did, uh, his first audit. Councilman O'Connor and I had motioned, uh, or passed a resolution asking him to do it, because no one had actually looked at their impact for the ten years that we were giving away tax abatements and tax credits. And it's been a year since then, and he mentioned the last time that he was at the table, that he was, um, revisiting and trying to update that data. So, I would like to just, um, put a hold on for us to, to hold another post-agenda, to have that discussion and kinda keep it in front of us. So, I'm just gonna motion for a cable cast post-agenda on the L E R T A audit.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Moving around. It, I see either, um, Mr. Lavell or O'Connor? Nope. Did see Ms. Strasburger's hand.
Yeah, so it's been, come to my attention that there is a, um, uh, an increase in, um, interest in what's called employee ownership. So, it can come in the form of a co-op, it can come in the, in many different forms, where if the employees have a stake, either stock, or somehow, some sort of ownership over a business, a small business, or even a larger business, as the business grows and thrives, they then, um, prosper as well. And it's, it's, um, it's a movement throughout the country, and especially throughout Pennsylvania, and there are some examples of that here in Pittsburgh. So, I'd like to call a post-agenda on that topic, um, for the end of the month, uh, so we can learn a little bit more about that.
Would phrase it, public, cable cast post.
Did you motion?
Well, let's figure, let's, let's figure out what we're calling it. Cable cast post-agenda on.
Employee ownership.
Employee ownership. All right, there's property moved. I need a second, there's a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Moving down. Anyone else? No one else? Um, there are no vague, again, um, happy new year, um, to our council. Um, this will be a busy and, um, interesting new year, I'm sure for all of us, as we move into, um, into the spring. And so, certainly it's my pleasure to continue to serve you, and hopefully we will do great things in this place.
I'm looking forward to working with our council. I think we get along great, and I think we do a lot of good things together for the city of Pittsburgh and our residents, so, looking forward to working with all of you.
Again, happy new years to everyone, and, um, um, we'll see what unfolds during this year. Again, thank the clerk, and the deputy clerk, and Mr. Bannick, and your staff for your excellent professionalism. It is, it is, um, people don't know, they see us on television and don't know your arms behind us, right? But in making sure all these things work efficiently. Um, I, um, and an excellent Christmas party, too.
And the sergeant-at-arms and the.
Everybody else.
Budget office and.
The, the sergeant-at-arms is great. You are absolutely, you're absolutely great. You have been the most active, you have been the most active and the most, um, we are in a different world now, where security is important, right? And you have made us feel much safer, and I want you to know, we appreciate you, we have noticed your, we have noticed your commitment, and has made a difference in our comfort level on this floor.
He fears me.
You know, I'll second that, Rev, and, uh, I will say John has nominated me as the best Parker. Is that?
That's cause you got eight.
And he gets to see all of us, right?
That's scary.
An autonomous vehicle.
Any other conversation? If no other conversation, uh, we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
For a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. We are adjourned.